The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such group or person unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition of the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. And in order to keep decorum, please be respectful when other people are speaking at the microphone. And please do not have any public outbursts. If there are public outbursts, please do that outside the chamber hall so that way we can maintain a respectful, neutral tone here in the chambers. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Okay, our first item of business on today's agenda Monday, April 25th, 2022, is our consent agenda, which is Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on these items? Anyone that would like to speak on Items 1 or 2? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is reappointment of Dallas McGee to the Lincoln Housing Authority Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2027, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving the assessment resolution for College View Business Improvement District and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Washington.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving the assessment resolution for Havlog Business Improvement District and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Washington.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is approving the assessment resolution for North 27th Street Business Improvement District and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1E is approving the assessment resolution for South Street Business Improvement District and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1F is approving the assessment resolution for University Place Business Improvement District and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1G is approving the assessment resolution for West O Street Business Improvement District and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Items 2A and 2B is introduced by Wash- uh, excuse me, introduced by Shob?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, Public Hearing and Liquor Resolutions. Item 4A is application of McFarland Family Farms LLC doing business as Max Creek Winery and Brewery for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at the Haymarket Farmers Market at 7th and P Streets on May 7th, 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on June 4th and the 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. and July 2nd and 16th of 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Anyone from McFarland Family Farms? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item 4B is application of Glacial Tilla Vineyard and Winery LLC doing business as Glacial Tilla for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at the Haymarket Farmers Market at 7th and P Streets on May 7th and 14th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Mr. Chair? Seeing no one else coming forward to talk on Items 4A or 4B, I'd like to move approval of both.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Shob, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 4, Public Hearing and Liquor Resolutions. We'll move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is use permit 21010, application of Waterford Estates LLC to allow up to 505 multifamily dwelling units and 48,000 square feet of commercial floor area on approximately 24.24 acres with associated waivers on property generally located at North 98th Street and Boathouse Road.
Okay, we'll start with the applicant if they would like to speak first. And then, once the applicant has an opportunity to speak, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Again, public hearing, you have five minutes to provide public comment. Please state your name and address. Once public hearing has been completed, then the applicant then has an opportunity to provide rebuttal.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with-
Rembold Ledkey Law Firm. Address is 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I'm here today on behalf of the developer and the applicant. So, this use permit, last time it was in front of you. It is supported by the planning department, but there were a few items of contention. Those were specifically the requirement that the applicant install a southbound right turn lane off of 98th underwater for the State's Drive, the reimbursement of the cost to build that turn lane from impact fees, and finally, the construction of a, a public street on the south side of the project. Here is a site plan, just to give you a refresher. Let's see. All right, so that's where that turn lane would be. Turn lane would be up here, right here, and then the south street that we're discussing is this street right here. So, we delayed for so- for a few weeks to work with the planning department to find a mutually agreeable solution to this. What, we were able to come to an agreement, and as I've heard of that, there is the motion to amend that's in front of you. That is where the develop- the developer will be installing the southbound right turn lane. And this is, this is actually an exhibit from the annexation agreement that's going to be in front of you as exhibit on 5C. But, this is a, the exhibit of the southbound right turn lane that the developer has agreed to install, and that will be reimbursed by impact fees pursuant to the amendment number six to the annexation agreement that is in front of you and on your agenda is 5C. The developer will also be required to build the, the south public street. The difference is, is that with this, the southbound right turn lane, the triggering event for when that is required to be built is when there is a lot that is final platted that can, will take access from Waterford Estates Drive. So as soon as they make that connection, they're going to be required to build that turn lane that provides access onto water, that provides easier flow of traffic onto Waterford Estates Drive. What this ultimately does is this provides the developer more flexibility as far as developing south to north, north to south, to carry some of the cost of that project. And so, with that, that means that we have come, the motion to amend in front of you today involves two things. It states that triggering event for the turn lane, that is the connection to Waterford Estates Drive. So as soon as this project is driving traffic to Waterford Estates Drive, they will be required to build that turn lane. And also, just the clarification that, that the south public street will be 33 feet up to the commercial north-south roadway, and then 27 feet after that, which is something agreed on by the planning, planning and L T U departments. So with that, I would ask if there are any questions about this use permit or the motion to amend that is in front of you to this use permit.
Are there any questions? Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, thank you very much for coming down. Could you show us on the map exactly Waterford Drive, or Waterford Estates Drive? And, so the, the turn lane is the north, on the north side, right?
Right. So, this is the lot generally, without the site plan. This street is Waterford Estates Drive. The turn lane we've shown would be right here for use for traffic moving south and then turning onto Waterford Estates Drive.
And the triggering event is the connectivity further west?
Is whenever any lot is final platted here that takes access to Waterford Estates Drive. So as soon as this project is actually taking access from this street, they'll be required to build this turn lane.
Okay, and then the south street?
Here.
Right, and when is, what is the trigger for that, or is that expected to be built prior to the other lots going in just north of the south street?
So this street will be required to be built. It will be a public street, but it will be required to be built whenever this lot is final platted.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Any further que- uh, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Ms. Post, could you, I'm gonna ask a similar question to what Councilwoman Raybold just asked. When you'd say that the right turn lane would be built as soon as a lot was accessed from Waterford Drive, can you tell me, do you believe that road is going to be built after the south road?
Uh, right now, it looks like the turn lane will be built first.
First, okay.
There is some flexibility now. The requirement to build that turn lane first makes this project much more feasible moving from north to south instead of south to north that was originally contemplated. So that means this, the way that this is structured won't require one way or the other.
Okay.
But that means that likely this project will now move from north to south because of that requirement for a south turn lane, and so that as soon as a lot on the north side is final platted and takes access, that, that southbound turn lane will be required to be built.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions from Ms. Post? Okay, is there anyone else from the applicant's side that is gonna speak?
Not to my naught, nope, not today, so.
All right, so then, we'll go ahead and open it up to a public hearing. Again, when you please come up, please state your name and your address. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. The first alarm that goes off will let you know that there's a, that there's one minute left in your time.
All right. Good evening, my name is Ken Allen, 9830 Waterford Estates Drive. I rise in opposition to permit 21021 regarding the 505 apartment unit complex to be built on 98th and Boathouse Drive. First off, I'd like to see a show of hands, how many of the council would like their house to have on a 505 unit apartment built next to them? Go ahead, you can raise your hands. I'd like to ask the people behind me, how many people want a 505 unit apartment building built next to them? Okay, that's enough people.
Please keep public outbursts to a minimum. I'm gonna be very strict on holding this. Last time, we had some applauses towards the end. I'm very, very serious about making sure that we maintain decorum in here so people feel safe and supported, and that they feel like that they can come and address their counsel.
That gets added on to my time, right?
Correct, we pause your time.
Okay. And lastly, Ms. Post and the developers, I'd like to see a show of hands, how many of them would like that 505 unit complex built next to their residence? I think it's pretty clear to you all, nobody wants this next to their residence. I'm not saying I don't want it, I just don't want it next to my residence. So that being said, we all know when something's right and when it's not right, correct? So, I would ask you to lead by example. If you don't want it, why would you make someone else? Not make, why would you allow this to happen for someone else? Okay? If that makes sense? By the way, Mr. Wesley says hi. Right now, developers have a free rein, a free rein allowed by this council because you have a comprehensive plan that says we need X amount of apartments built in the city of Lincoln. Okay, so developers see this. They're latching on to anything. They don't care where it's at. It could be next to your house, your house, it doesn't matter. Unfortunately, this is close to my house, two houses away. I don't really want that. I don't mind if it's built somewhere else, or I'm gonna give you a proposal here in just a minute. So, laws and ordinances were created, most often by a compromise. A compromise so one party cannot take or have advantage over another party. That's what I feel like's going on here. So, here's my compromise. I'd like to offer a compromise to this council. First, make a motion to table this agenda item. Just table it, okay? Second, this is the biggie. Make a motion to create an ordinance not to allow this permit to be, in this kind of permit, to be, of apartments to be built within 2,000 feet of any single-family existing residence. I'm willing to compromise on that, it's a good starting point. People, there are plenty of places to build these complexes. Why do we have to keep on building them? We saw this on O Street on 35th and O, built in the middle of a Waioke area. We saw this being built, constructed, right in the middle of residential places, and nobody wanted it. I'm not sure why this happened. So I'm willing to listen to counteroffers. Folks, this would be a win-win. This would be a win for council and the city because they can still achieve their goal of X number of apartments being built. It's a win for the homeowners because they wouldn't have to tolerate this kind of thing happening within a parameter, whichever is set by you or legal. It's up to you. Lastly, and this is kind of important, last week, we heard councilperson Ward say about the food vendors. It was nice that council could work with people, right? It was a great thing, you all worked with people. I'm not seeing that in this project. That's what I ask. Please, stand back, take a look at what you're doing, work with the people of Lincoln, who voted you into this office. So, at this time, I would be willing to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, is, would you like to have a rebuttal?
Thank you. I would, this is a map of current zoning. So as the council considers this, I would like to remind the council, well, current zoning before we started this process, anyway. Actually, this is the north end of this parcel, it is zone B2, it has been zone B2 since, I believe, approximately 2008. That was done in order to give the neighbors notice that there would be a commercial use of this property. Multifamily housing is an allowed use under the B2 district, and it could, there are several other allowed uses such as retail and other higher-traffic uses, higher-density uses that could be, would be allowable in the B2 district. In this case, the developer is looking at multifamily housing as we rezone this B2, which will actually have a lower trip count than some of the other retail uses. So, with that, there have been covenants filed for the Waterford area since its inception around 2008 that contemplate this area would be commercial, and there is a specific provision in the residential covenants for the single-family homes in the Waterford area that specifically states this area will be developed commercial eventually. So with that, this is an area that is prime for commercial and suffici- and lots and lots of notice has been given to single-family owners that this would develop commercial about any way that you can give notice 20 years out. So with that, I'd ask, be happy to answer any other questions, and ask your approval of this use permit and the motion to amend. So, thank you.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you so much. So we had a introduction, we had a public hearing, and then we had a rebuttal, so now we're gonna move on to the next item.
Item 5B is approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department-
I'll just send them back out, but yeah.
And the Department of Motor Vehicles for the use of DMV facial recognition system for a four-year period with the option to extend for two additional four-year terms.
I'd like to invite up, if someone's here to provide an introduction.
Didn't know I was providing an introduction, I'm sorry, I apologize. Teresa Euns, D E R E S A, last name E W I N S, the Chief of Police here in Lincoln. So this is a pretty important tool for us. It is the use of facial recognition. I wanna make it really clear to everyone that this is not the way in which we go and arrest anyone, to put it simply. You have to have a lot more than just a hit on facial recognition. Like I said, it is a tool, since September, we've only used it 23 times in total. In order to move forward on a case, the investigator must have additional information to identify the individual responsible. Being from San Francisco, I understand people's hesitation to use such, such tools. I, I have gone over a policy, I've researched the company in which the DMV uses, they are the top three. I would tell you, doing this job for the last 26 years, way back when, I would've told you that I didn't feel all that comfortable with it. Today, in 2022, I feel that the algorithms and the companies are, are, have improved in, in how they do things. And they wouldn't be rated the top three for, for making mistakes. I believe that it's about 99.5% accuracy. But then, going back to how we do things, it really is about the investigation that we, we conduct. Like I said, we don't move forward on any arrest warrant until we have additional information and additional evidence. And the policies that we have in place, I feel very comfortable with that as well. And so I, I would love to, to be able to move forward and continue using this.
Are there any questions from council at this time?
No, sir.
Seeing none, thanks so much. Now, going to a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item 5C is approval of amendment number six to the Waterford Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement between the city, Waterford Estates LLC, and B S B S J LLC related to the construction and funding of the North 98th Street and Waterford Estates Drive, southbound right turn lane.
Would the applicant like to go first?
Good evening. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rembold Ledkey Law Firm, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am here on behalf of the developer, B S B S J LLC, in support of amendment number six to the Waterford Estates Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement. This is an amendment to the original annexation agreement for the Waterford Estates development. The effect of this is to reimburse the developer with impact fees, with their own impact fees for building that southbound turn lane that turns from, southbound from 98th Street onto Waterford Estates Drive. So we were able to work with Waterford Estates LLC to position that once the improvements in the North 104th Roundabout are fully reimbursed to that developer, any impact fees generated in the area will next be used to reimburse the cost of building this southbound turn lane until this developer is paid in full. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Post?
No.
Okay, seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on item 5C? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is use permit 21010, application of Waterford Estates LLC to allow up to 505 multifamily dwelling units and 48,000 square feet of commercial floor area on approximately 24.24 acres with associated waivers on property generally located at North 98th Street and Boathouse Road, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion?
I'd also like to make a motion to amend 22R-98 to reflect the revised conditions related to the street to the south of the use permit as well as the right turn lane that we had spoken about previously at 98th and Waterford Estates Drive.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Beckius, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Uh, stepped out.
Oh, excuse me. Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to recognize that we had, we heard from Waterford Estate, we heard from many people of Waterford Estate who were disappointed that this development was gonna move forward or could move forward. And I wanted to let them know that I, I heard you. I came out to Waterford, I drove around, I did look at it, and I looked at the long history of this project, going back actually to the Planning Commission in 2006. I saw that this development has gone through the steps very carefully and let folks know that this would become commercial, and commercial included multifamily. And I can hear you when you say that you don't want this, but this is, in fact, an agreeable, not to you perhaps, but it is allowable to happen, and there has been fair not to you perhaps, but it is allowable to happen, and there has been fair notice that this was going to happen.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
And I want to thank the development team and their attorney because sometimes there are compromises that have to be made. And certainly, I appreciate the fact that they went back to work with L T U and L F R and our first responders on the importance of the road on the south side to get that constructed and recognizing that this will be an area that there will be additional traffic and that the turn lane on the north side is pretty essential too. And working out those fundamental issues that will make it a more livable place for those that will be certainly moving into this very nice area. So I want to thank them for taking the time to work through these issues, as painful as some of them may have been, but they were able to get through them together and to make the project better.
Any further discussion? May we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Madam Clerk and Chair Bowers, would it be appropriate to maybe call five C while Mr. McGinnis is out of the room?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, item five C is approval of amendment number six to the Waterford conditional annexation and zoning agreement between the City, Waterford Estates LLC, and B S B S J LLC related to the construction and funding of the North Ninety-Eighth Street and Waterford Estates Drive, southbound right turn lane, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I think this was a wonderful compromise. I'm glad they worked this out with the right turn lane and the reimbursement of the costs. I'm glad they were able to work it out between the two different projects and the two different owners.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'll be calling item five B, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and the Nebraska Department of Motor Vehicles for the use of DMV facial recognition system for a four-year period with the option to extend for two additional four-year terms, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius?
Yes, I would just like to thank Chief Eunz for coming up and explaining to us a little bit about the process. You know, this is one tool being used in order to identify folks and certainly not the only tool being used, and that brings me a great sense of comfort. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes our section five public hearing resolutions. We'll move on to section six public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item six A is approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln and County of Polk for the lease space by Aging Partners for its Personal and Family Services Program at four hundred Hawkeye Street, Osceola, Nebraska, from May first, two thousand twenty-two through August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on item six A?
Director?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Randy Jones, Director of Department of Aging for the city. Just a reminder that we have interlocal agreements with seven other counties that are close to Lincoln to support them with their aging services. This agreement is with Polk County for the lease of space where we will place one of our Medicaid waiver caseworkers. This is entirely paid for by state and federal funds. There's no city funds associated with the lease. May I answer any questions?
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Bless you.
Okay, that concludes our section six public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. I'll move on to section seven, ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. Item seven A is change of zone two one zero two eight, application of Creek Carrier to change from H one interstate commercial to H four general commercial on property generally located at four thousand eight hundred West O Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven B is approving the conditional zoning agreement between the City and Creek Carriers for the property generally located at Northwest Forty-Eighth Street and West O Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven C is special permit two one zero two nine, application of Creek Carrier to allow up to one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of commercial floor area on twenty-three point forty-eight acres with associated waivers on property generally located at four thousand eight hundred West O Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Beckius, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven D is establishing a pilot program temporarily governing food trucks in the public roadways of the city, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Councilwoman Ward, would you like to open on your ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say thanks again to all of those city staff, people that helped push this along. And again, to Nick Maestus with Muchachos, who was the originator of this change and brought this to our attention a couple of years ago in the fall. And we were halted right away by COVID. But we are excited to put this ordinance into effect, hopefully in a few minutes, and get it signed so that this spring, if you're interested in having a food truck come to your home, they'll now be able to park longer in the neighborhoods. Instead of ten minutes, they can park for three hours and host some of the upcoming spring activities. So with that, I would ask the support of my council colleagues in moving this forward. So thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven D is annexation two one zero zero five, application of Industrial Salt Development LLC to annex approximately fifty-three point thirty acres more or less on property generally located west of North Fifty-Sixth Street between Albo and Arbor Roads, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Other Councilman, Job.
Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven F is change of zone two one zero three eight, application of Industrial Salt Development LLC to change from AG Agriculture District, H one Interstate Commercial District, and H three Highway Commercial District to H four General Commercial District on property generally located at North Fifty-Sixth Street and Arbor Road, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven G is approving the conditional annexation and zoning agreement between the City of Industrial Salt Development LLC for the annexation and development of property generally located southwest of the intersection of Arbor Road and North Fifty-Sixth Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven H is annexation two two zero zero four, application of Southwest Folsom Development LLC to annex approximately thirty-five point eighty acres more or less on property generally located at West Old Chaney Road and Southwest Twelfth Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven I is change of zone two two zero zero six, application of South Folsom Development LLC to change from AG Agriculture District to R three Residential District on property generally located at West Old Chaney Road and Southwest Twelfth Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven J, comprehensive plan amendment two two zero zero one, application of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County two thousand and fifty comprehensive plan to revise the future land use map, growth tiers map, and future service limit to include a new commercial area on the east side of Highway seventy-seven near West Pioneers Boulevard and change the existing commercial area to urban residential on the west side of Highway seventy-seven near West Pioneers Boulevard. Change a small portion of land from green space to urban residential northeast of South Folsom and West Old Chaney. Change a parcel northwest of South Folsom and West Old Chaney from urban residential to public. Change Wilderness Park to growth tiers one A, one B, and one C in various locations, including associated updates to the future service limit. Change the area near Pioneers Boulevard and Highway seventy-seven from tier one C to tier one B and change several parcels with approved development plans from tier one B to tier one A on property generally bounded by Southwest Twelfth Street, on the west of Adorn Street, on the north of the railroad, on the east, and the Rockabye Road, on the south on property generally located at Highway seventy-seven and West Pioneers Boulevard, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we delay the vote on item seven J, seven K, seven L, and seven M.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion on the motion to delay? Councilwoman Raybold?
I think we heard a tremendous amount of testimony last Monday on some of the developments, but in particular Wilderness Crossing. There are lots of concerns out there on this development. Certainly, if you look at our comprehensive plan and it talks about the guiding principles for community form, the urban environment. Particularly with Wilderness Crossing, there have been raised so many concerns. The comprehensive plan states the natural and environmentally sensitive areas should be preserved within and between neighborhoods. Conservation areas and open lands should be used to define and connect different neighborhoods. The natural topography and features of the land should be preserved by new development to maintain the natural drainways, drainage ways, and minimize land disturbance. I've had concerns about this, and we have reached out to the developers with concerns. The other issue that I wanted to raise is when we're faced with very sensitive areas, we always try to give especially thoughtful consideration on all of the natural elements. And I just wanted to show everyone, this is the Nine Mile Prairie Environs Study that was done in two thousand twenty by UNL, working with all the stakeholders and the groups. And as you can see, it's really quite, quite large. I feel that we need additional time, and that's why I've asked for three weeks so that we could continue to reach out and work with the developer. In many cases and in many situations, an environmental impact study should be done when you're dealing with something as precious and sacred as Wilderness Park. And so I find that we're skipping some of the essential elements that should be done so that we have a better understanding of the buffers that should be created, the land that should be preserved and protected for the natural environs as well as the human environs. And so I just, you know, wanted to point out that this is a really big study, really assessing and evaluating all the circumstances, environmental and the flooding and floodplains, and taking those all into considerations. And so for that reason, I hope my colleagues will consider that we give additional time, reaching out to the developers to come up with some solutions that will create conditions that will safeguard Wilderness Park.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
Councilwoman Raybold, thank you for offering an option on the delay. I was thinking as well, for some similar reasons and some slightly different reasons. We have a comp plan for a reason because it looks into the future. It looks at what we want our community to be as we look forward for the next generations, not just thirty years, but really for a lifetime and many lifetimes. And we say that the environment has a place in this, that environmental stewardship and sustainability is important to us. And I think we missed the mark in a couple of places when we're looking at the comp plan. And I'm a huge supporter. I'm a planner by training and by profession. And so I don't say this lightly, but I think that when we have looked at Wilderness Park, we have missed an opportunity to look at Wilderness Park for values beyond flood protection. Helen Busalis, Mayor Busalis, was a wonderful person, and she had a great vision. And she recognized the need to protect Lincoln from flooding in the Salt Creek Drainage Area. And so she set aside, or had set aside Wilderness Park. And for all of these years, for fifty years, we have looked at the future of Wilderness Park. And when we look at whether or not we should make additions, we've always focused our attention on floodplain. And we've not taken the opportunity to look at other value sets when we think about how to ensure the long-term viability of Wilderness Park. And I know that there are many people in the room today, and many people last week, and many people who've written us to explain to us why Wilderness Park is valuable beyond flood protection. I want to also give some acknowledgement to the developers who have been willing to be flexible, to make some changes. One of the things that we've said in the comp plan is that we need conservation design standards. And that conversation was very clear during the Nine Mile Prairie debate. And we talked about why we need these conservation design standards because I don't want to play gotcha with developers. I want them to understand that when you put a development or when you propose a development next to an area that we say is valuable for natural resource reasons or for other reasons, that there are things we want you to do. We want you to pay attention to these areas and make choices that balance the need for the development up against the values of the natural area. And sadly, we still don't have conservation design standards in place. The developers can take a look at a long list of best management practices and choose which would be the most appropriate for their development. This developer has agreed to provide downlighting, which I think is really important in order to protect dark sky. This developer has agreed to put in swales at the backside of lots in order to help control drainage and a few other things that I think are really important. But these are mitigations. These are ways to limit the amount of harm. They're not ways to preserve, they're ways to, to mitigate. And so I want to thank you for, for making those concessions, but I've asked for a few more. And I realize it's beyond what they're interested or capable of doing. But with that said, I still feel that there is a need to understand a little bit more about the watershed management of the entire area. You heard us earlier today also approve another development and I feel comfortable that that development can go forward. But as I look at some of the changes in detail for this, I would like one more week. Oh, I'm so sorry, you want three weeks. Sorry. My apologies. To, to take a look at a few other things. I think it, it's worth it to take a look at sound and it's worth it to take a look at watershed management in general. So for those reasons, Jane, I can support what you've said today.
Any further discussion, Councilman Beckius?
Yes, I'm not going to vote in support of the delay. The Wilderness Park Subarea Plan has identified over several decades areas of the park or nearby park for acquisition, for protection. And some of those parcels have been acquired and some of those parcels have been protected via conservation easements or other easements placed on them. The parcel in question today for decades has not been identified as a parcel necessary to be preserved or protected. And I don't know that three weeks is going to change decades of work by an entire community. And so I, I, I will not support the delay.
Any further discussion? Councilman Shob?
Councilman, were you up first? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Ward, Councilman Beckius, Councilwoman Washington, and all of my colleagues. Councilwoman Raybold, what would we do in three weeks that would change where we are now? Are we going to spend money on a study or are we going to? I don't understand what we can accomplish in three weeks.
Well, I'm, I'm very hopeful. I, I'd like to read a letter from one of the constituents that also identified elements that we should hear some word about, word about.
Councilwoman Raybold, it's Council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Shob, it's time to ask questions and to.
Just a quick answer, do you have a list of things we can get done? I probably should have gone after Councilwoman Ward at this point.
Yes, I'd like to address it when it's appropriate. I have some answers.
That's all I have to ask, what was it maybe, in what term would you do that? Yes.
And in order to follow the rules, we're going to let all the council members speak first and then we'll do a second round, just to make sure we're following the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess as well as Councilman Shob and Beckius, I think an EIS, an environmental impact study is not going to be done. I can't see it being done in three weeks. I'm interested in your response, Councilwoman Raybold. I think it gives false hope to the reality of this project and this is really hard. I mean, this is a hard, hard project to be, and we all know that. And it may be simple to some of you, but it's not, it's not an easy answer. It is not, in my point of view, fair to liken it to Nine Mile Prairie. Those studies were done two years ago and there was also a blight study done by the Urban Development Department. I led that project for the council district that I represent. So I have just got to say to liken it to Nine Mile Prairie from my point of view is not apples to apples. There was not a, a development project ready to go that has been aligned with the comprehensive plan and has been approved within those parameters and advised, our council has been advised by our city department heads who are paid to give us solid advice, whether we agree with it or disagree with it philosophically or whether, whether our audience does or not. Sometimes it is just really, really hard to make change. And so all this to say, I think a study is disingenuous. It's not going to be done in three weeks. I think we all know that. I think that we need to give credit to all of you that are back here today for being so honest and so forthright and working so hard to make your wishes known. You know, I, I get it. I'm a farm kid. I go there whenever I can and I appreciate that solitude. And a lot of you are my personal friends. I've camped with you, I've hiked with you. You've taught me a lot about our parks in Lincoln. So it's not that I, I, I don't want what you want, but I think sometimes as leaders, we have, we're put in a position to make really hard decisions. And I, I've just got to be really honest and say to you, a study makes absolutely no sense to me and it's not going to change things for you. And I just have to be really clear about that. That's my opinion, so I'll leave it at that for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion, Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, I, I do want to thank my colleagues and their forbearance. I just want to remind them that we really took our time and we were thoughtful and deliberate when it came to Nine Mile Prairie. We, you know, I would have asked my colleagues, would you give me three months or four months or six months? Would you give me three months like we gave the discussion and debate on Nine Mile Prairie? And we postponed it so that we could bring the stakeholders together and talk about solutions with the developer. So we were thoughtful, we were deliberate, and we took the time. We delayed action on the blight study for almost three months. And so I would have loved to come out and ask my colleagues for three months, but I can see that it's not happening. And I, I know Councilmember Beckius raised some very good points. What has changed since this has been designated this area? A lot has changed. We have a South Beltway coming, which is something that we've all anticipated and hoped for, but now it's a reality and it's happening. And as a result, you know, I think every one of us up here agrees that we are all advocates for well-thought-out development that is, is in the best interest of our community. But we all agree that an environs of Wilderness Park should be done because there are several unanswered questions. For example, Highway seventy-seven and Pioneer's Boulevard interchange, what's going to happen with that? Is it going to be closed or is it the intersection at Old Chaney? That's going to close. So what does that mean for the relocated First Street? Is there going to be additional traffic going up First Street and along that, that border? So we also, we have talked about, and I commend the civil engineer for the developer talking about the weather and up-to-date stormwater forecasts. We know that that is certainly something very impactful that we weren't talking about twenty years ago when it was shown on the, on the land use as something dedicated for that. Things have really changed in the last twenty years when it comes to climate change. We have seen just what a one-inch rainfall has done to Salt Creek. It just overflows its bank. That's what it's supposed to do and that's what we want it to do. But it's been only for a one-inch rainfall. So we're seeing the dramatic impacts of that. We know that there's light pollution, there's noise pollution and the traffic. What is that going to do to the natural environment of Wilderness, Wilderness Park? And what is the right amount of buffer? Do we know that answer? Do the developers know that answer? I know in the environs report that was done for Nine Mile Prairie, they certainly talk about a buffer and they talk about the buffer as being the U.S. Forest Surface Authorized Design Guideline document for buffers, corridors, and greenways. In the document, various buffer widths are outlined for various species ranging from a hundred to six hundred feet. Well, the current buffer that is being proposed by the developer is forty-three feet to sixty feet. For this master plan, and they're talking with faunal buffer corridor with wildlife, a width of five hundred feet centered on the stream channel was employed for movement between natural habitats. Chemical spray drift can negatively impact pollinator species and sensitive habitat. So if you can imagine five hundred and seventy-five households in this development and the amount of fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, and insecticides that they will be spraying on their yards will drift. A hundred and thirty-foot buffer between agricultural fields created by ground spraying is recommended to protect vegetation, aquatic, and invertebrate species. These buffers are shown along hydrologic features and the Nine Mile Prairie environs. So they called out for and identified buffers. But in this study, we don't know what the recommended buffers would be. And I commend the developer for realigning First Street, but that's not enough. And I, I think Wilderness Park and the developer can't, you just can't check the boxes on this. This is a very treasured green space and we, we don't know enough about how to best protect it. And I think I'd love it if my colleagues would accept a three-month delay to allow us to do an impact study. What is the rush? What is the hurry? What is the urgency? Is this land going to get up and walk away? I don't think so. Is this development going to fail? If it's a good development, why wouldn't we want to do everything to do the right thing and make it good for our community? So what is the harm in a delay? We took the time and we're thoughtful and deliberate with Nine Mile Prairie. I don't see this as being any difference. It's a gem, just like Nine Mile Prairie is. And I, I would respectfully ask for it because whatever we do here can't be undone. And let's be thoughtful, let's be deliberate, let's take the time and let's work with the developers to continue to come up with the right plan for this area.
Any further discussion? Councilman Shob?
Can I go back to my questions? Do you have a, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Raybold, I hear what you're saying. What would be the next? Again, a study would take much longer. And the, this has been in process for several months now and many of these conversations are already had. We've had experts come forward and, and talk about many of the issues. What would be our next step if we delay? And, and, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll stop there.
Okay. I would love to take these next three weeks and work with the developers and work with the city and the planning department, urban development, certainly with Parks and Recreation and talk about how quickly we can enact an environmental study, get it issued, and work out those details in the next three week and three weeks. And so that was my intention, to try to go back, work together on coming up with these solutions and learning more about how long will it take to do an environmental impact study? I know we received a letter from Weyushka, the Autumn Society? Did I say that right?
Wacheska.
Wacheska, thank you. Saying that, you know, UNL did this, this study. We have such a fantastic resource right here at UNL. They know about water, they know about climate change. So I think if we could reach out to them, these three weeks would be helpful to be able to do that research and then come back to the council and tell them this is actually how long it would take. I didn't think you would buy it if I said, could we have three months or six months to do an environmental impact study? Because I don't have the answers to that question. But I'd like to be able to come back to you with answers on how long it would take to do an environs study, environmental impact study. I think it's that important and I think it's worth the wait.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So I, again, I hear you. I also feel like this is a little bit of saying that our departments or stormwater management team, our, our planning department, our Parks and Rec Department, who've been working on this for several months, are you suggesting that they didn't know what they were doing or don't know what they're talking about? And we shouldn't listen to our department?
I'm, I'm very, I'm very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department. I'm very proud of the work and our planning team has done. But Nine Mile Prairie reached out to UNL to get more scientific data and impact. I don't think any of us know, and I don't think our Parks and Recreation Department are the environmental experts on what a development can do to something as priceless like Wilderness Park. I don't think any of us know until we reach out to other experts who know about environmental impacts. I can just address to you, when I lived in Washington DC and worked for District of Columbia Building Industry Association doing environmental impact studies was just a matter of routine. And I don't anticipate it would take that long, but something as valuable as Wilderness Park, whatever we do there can't be undone. And I think it's important that we do the research and reach out to additional experts that have a, probably a greater knowledge and depth of research that they've done on other sensitive areas that they would be willing to share with us and give us better guidance. Like what should the buffer be? Should it be a hundred feet? You know, this talks about federal standards, but this, every situation is a little bit different. And I would like to get additional guidance and I think we owe it to all the people here. I think we owe it to all the people in Lincoln. I think one person testified that this is not just a NIMBY issue, not in my backyard. This is in all of our backyards, so I think it's worth the wait.
Any further discussion? Councilman Shob?
Yeah, I would like to hear from our planning department and maybe our Parks and Rec on their perspective on this.
Director Carey, Director Johnson?
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, five-five-five, South Tenth Street.
Mr. Carey, thank you for coming forward. Councilwoman Raybold asked about studies. Have there been studies done in this area? Have there been an environmental impact study done in this area or mostly the park? This has been not much of a discussion about the development, more about the park. I think, is that fair to say, Councilwoman Raybold?
I think it's the whole environment area, not just the park. Because what impact, what happens outside the park will impact the park.
Have there been environmental impact studies done in these areas before?
I'm going to let Director Johnson answer this as well because he's been part of the studies that have occurred for Wilderness Park over the years. I think we have to separate what an environmental impact study is, a very specific type of study. What I would point to is that we do have a Wilderness Park Master Plan that's been in place since, I believe, nineteen ninety-nine. And that has been guiding all those decisions over the years to acquire some parcels, to get some conservation easements, to protect land that were, lands that were identified in that study. So in a general sense, I would say, yes, there has been and is a study of Wilderness Park and it has been used to improve conditions in the park over, over, over the years. And Lynn, I'd certainly would.
Yeah, Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks Migration, I would agree with what David said, that there was a professionally-prepared study of Wilderness Park and the environs to identify property that should be preserved or that was recommended to be preserved to protect environmental resources, including the flood plain. And we've used that document to kind of guide our thinking and decision-making about this, about this project at this point.
Are there additional studies or research you think would help us make a better decision now, in the next three weeks? Is there something you could undertake that would, that would provide new information?
I don't think that there is readily available information that would dramatically change our position, mainly because of the situation of the parcel for this development as it sits physically. I will note that the developer has agreed to use the NOAA fourteen updated rainfall amounts in their study for their grading and drainage plan when they have to submit that as a requirement. That will therefore include the most up-to-date information. So I'm just giving that as an example of what still is to come and that information that will be required before a final plat and development actually occurs.
And what physical alterations will occur to the park with this development? What are the, where's the bulldozer going to land in the park?
There is no part of the park that's part of this project.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Given the last week that we've had of wind and I've been very concerned about water runoff and how that affects the park, can we talk a little bit about drift and can we talk a little bit about spraying? Because I, we spent some time thinking about invasive species, asking there to be a no-plant list and also then turning around and providing the developer with a, a please-plant list of native species. But, you know, we know that people who live in subdivisions often fertilize, put pesticides down. And I'd like to, I mean, one of the reasons for the swale that was asked and, and delivered was to manage that. But let's talk a little bit about drift. I don't, I mean, I hope that these winds are not going to be a constant for us in this, in the turnover of seasons. But we always have wind in Nebraska. What do we know about the impact of pesticide drift and herbicide drift on vegetation on the Sandstone Prairie?
It's a good question. And I would say that I'm, I'm probably not qualified to, to, to answer that question specifically. I think about that piece of property being farmed for a number of years and that there probably was pesticide, herbicide, and fertilizer application being used on that property. So they, the park has, or the vegetation within the park and the, the wildlife in the park has withstood that impact, at least at this point. In fact, that entire area at one time, not the entire area, but much of the area was farmland prior to it being developed. But I, I would say that, that I can't speak knowledgeably enough to answer that question about if people are spraying herbicides for weeds, if people are spraying insecticides, how much impact, trying to quantify that impact. I guess I'm not qualified to do that.
I think even in this point of knowing how far they do drift before they fall would be helpful. Then we could look at the correct amount of setback. And I, I appreciate that there is at least the forty-three feet of native plantings, but that's not a very large setback if we're trying to manage pesticides and we want to support pollinators and all that other stuff that we say we do. I just, I really just wanted a little bit of time to take a look at some of those things so that we could better set of that. And I also really want to, I want to take a look at what is happening with sound. We often talk about development going in and not doing harm to the existing uses. That people have to be a good neighbor when they come in. And we've heard very eloquent testimony about existing use on the small piece of property that sits within, well, is surrounded by. Hugged by Wilderness Park. And I really want to be cognizant of that when we're talking about development. And I really want to be cognizant of that, when we're talking about development. And I'm pleased that we were able to work on some light trespass issues, but I really do want to talk about sound. And if there are small ways, big ways, whatever, to mitigate sound. And that's one of the reasons why, fellow councilors, I am interested in some delay, because I think that this is something that can be negotiated and worked out quickly-ish. That's not scientific, sorry.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I have a question for David Carey. So in the comprehensive plan, there is the language on page 2.8. It says, "The natural topography and features of the land should be preserved by new development to maintain the natural drainage ways and minimize land disturbance." So help me, or help us understand, why wouldn't that apply with wilderness crossing and the developments that would like to go there? With the hills that are on the land, and the elevation where there will be natural drainage, only because it's so high up? But tell me how this development is making efforts to preserve?
Have we seen a grading plan?
So, part of that answer is that the grading plan will be submitted, will be reviewed, and will have to follow our regulations. And has to pass that review before they can move forward. I think that continues to be a very important point to be made, talking about natural drainage and working with the land. So that suggestion applies to all new developments. I will point out that a comprehensive plan as a guide is not, we don't have all the regulations in place that would apply very strictly the concept that you point out about working with the natural topography. What we do on a regular basis with all developments is we try to minimize the grading or the impact on the natural features as much as possible. I will point out that the comprehensive plan also very specifically highlights riparian areas and natural settings. And in this parcel, there is not that, as much of that. We pointed out during the hearing that, just to the south of this parcel, there is a significant natural drainage way. It's the one that ends up going underneath Highway 77 as well. Those are the focus points, when we talk about trying to retain those natural drainage ways, as well as the natural pieces of the land. Whenever there is a new development, there is going to be a change in order to do the development that happens. That's a given. But again, on this parcel, for this project, because it is all outside of the floodplain, and all the indications are that with the new drainage and plan that's going to come through before it moves forward, it will still all be outside of the floodplain. So there is a difference there, depending on what type of development we're talking about as well, and when we apply or attempt to do some of those things as well. So, there is a lot in what you point out, but again, we don't have all of the regulations in place to require certain things. And that is somewhat purposeful as well, to allow the balancing act of the development along with the natural environment preservation. So, it's a long-ish answer to what you asked, but that's, those are the thoughts that go through my mind when I try to answer that.
And I have to say, it's somewhat frustrating for us to get information that shows a preliminary platted area with multifamily, 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 on top of areas that would have, like, the sandstone hills covered with dirt, that would have to be, I don't know how they're going to grade it, but it's like, right where a multifamily. So when we see those structures there as planned by the developer, and then if you walk the ground, you look and think like, wow, they're going to have to really just have a big, multiple bulldozers trying to grind down. And I wonder, you know, that, as I read it, it certainly doesn't talk about, it doesn't address minimize land disturbance. I consider it, it's really remaking that whole hillside. So, as I understand, the comprehensive plan is a guide, to help us make good decisions. And so, I don't think I take this literally, but for all development, since I do support development, but in this case, when we're dealing with a park, I think I am going to take it literally, that it does, this development is not going to minimize the land disturbance. It's going to be significant.
Any further questions for city staff?
No, sir.
Seeing none? Thank you both so much. Any further discussion on the motion to delay?
No.
Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
I'm going to confirm that the motion to delay is to delay items J, K, L, and M for vote, for three weeks.
Correct.
Okay. Ward?
No. No, excuse me.
McGinnis?
No.
Beckius?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, 2-4.
Okay, well, Councilwoman Washington?
I would like to offer a motion to delay for just one week. I don't expect to get environmental assessment done, that's not what I'm asking. But I would like to have one week to look at additional solutions for sound buffering, and to, yeah, to look at sound buffering.
Second?
Moved in second by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius?
Once again, I don't know what we're going to accomplish in a week. And, you know, furthermore, a lot of the, a lot of the amendments and work that has been done between some city councilors and the developer, has been outside the purview of all city councilors. I think that there are individual members here who have been negotiating what they want to see happen, which is, I guess, your prerogative, but certainly has been outside the purview of the entire council. I don't, this has been going on for weeks, without the involvement of the rest of the city council. I don't need to have that go on for another week, to not be involved.
Any further discussion? I just had one question, maybe for Director Carey.
So from what I understand, even if the council moves forward with this today, construction doesn't start immediately, correct?
Correct.
Do you have an idea of how many, what the time period would be for when construction may start?
I haven't been given a formal timeframe for that, from the developer. Although, what we do know is that there is quite a bit of work for the grading and drainage plan that still has to happen, and that will take months in and of itself. And then it depends on the timing of the developer wanting to start construction. So I, my expectation is that we won't see any construction, probably no earlier than this summer.
Okay, so there would be months. One of the things that I had heard was, someone wanted to look at potential legal remedies, and that they wanted a couple of months in order to do that. So even if the council moves forward with this, there would still be that opportunity for months to go by, for folks to look at another avenue, the community to look at another avenue.
I think that's fair to say that, yeah.
Okay. Councilman Chob?
May I? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carey, thanks for coming up again. So, months? Then what are we doing here today? What are we approving? And if we're going to be still getting new plans and new ideas in time to talk about it and work about it?
So...
Is this a done deal when we vote today?
The, it's not a done deal in the sense of the exactness of what the development will look like, and exactly how it lays out. What is being requested for action today, obviously there's several different things...
Several different things. There's a lot of...
But I'll focus on the plan unit development, because that's the plan that we're talking about. So on the property that this is being proposed on, the plan unit development is, we're acting on a form of zoning change, that allows for single-family, multifamily, and commercial to occur on this parcel. And after today, if approval is given, the development team still has the requirements to, like we keep saying, the drainage and grading plan, as well as the details of how that piece of property is going to be laid out specifically, within the parameters of what gets approved today for conditions of approval. That's the other part of this, too. But that language that's in the PUD has to be followed at that point. For example, the setback and fence topic that we've been talking about, if that's approved with the PUD, within the PUD, that has to be followed in that final form of the plan and the project. So there is work to be done. This is, I would be, consider this a first step to approval, so that they can move forward with the project. That's the best way to put it.
And help me for just context. We just approved the same number of units on 24 acres at Waterford?
Yes, similar number of units.
And this is 75 acres?
Yes.
Just trying to get a grasp on how big this is.
Okay. Well, Councilwoman Ward, and then Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have questions for you, Director Carey, but you're welcome. Please stay. You'll probably be back. I just was, but you did help answer something that occurred to me when Councilman Shob was speaking. If we could help, if we were to pass everything today, help address Councilwoman Washington's concern about the sound, was that your last concern, in the future? Because it's not complete, if we could work with our applicant on add-ons in the future. I know that they have responded so well, to date, about so many things. So I think you've answered that for me, because we're not completely done. And I guess, to that point, I just want to add on to what Councilman Beckius said, for the benefit of those here and those watching, that I, too, was not privy to a lot of discussions that my colleagues were having with the applicant, and those changes that they were making ahead of time, which I know have changed since that time. So I think it would have been better for all of us to know what everybody was doing, so, all along, and then maybe we could have addressed some of these things before today. But because that did not happen with all of our colleagues, we're discussing some of those today. But I just wanted to make that point for the record, and so that those of you here knew that we were not aware of a lot of the things that were being discussed by our council members. And I know Councilman Shob was misrepresented over the weekend about his intentions, because I, we don't always know what is happening unless we keep talking to one another. So I just would like to make that point as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Just for everyone's sake, would you explain what part of the next piece is open for public comment, or public even review, even if they can't comment? How will the public know about the PUD moving forward?
If this package is approved today, that'll give the go-ahead to the development team to do the additional work that's been mentioned. That information will ultimately be public record and viewable. There will not be a public hearing in the future on those items, unless there's a change. I mean, if there's a significant change to the PUD that requires another hearing, we would go, come back to the process. So that does happen sometimes, but if it moves forward in the way that it may be approved today, that there would not be an additional public hearing.
So, no significant change? So if they keep to the conditional agreement, annexation, and PUD agreement, they, no one may actually see this until it's on public record after it's been filed?
Yes, that's accurate.
Councilwoman Raybold?
So David, does that include the drainage study, that the public will not have an opportunity to hear? Or will it be presented back to the city council, saying, this is a drainage study, this is what work is going to be additionally required of the applicant that is outside the documents that have been provided to us today? Is the public going to have a chance to weigh in on any of that process?
No. Again, I would reiterate that they will be required, just like other developments, to meet our standards. So they won't move forward until they do so, but there will not be a public hearing on the drainage plan.
So there's no further opportunity for public comment, at this point in time?
Correct. Other than somebody, anybody could email in or call in, and they could talk to staff, of course, but...
Thank you. I do want to address one other thing. I've not heard about negotiating behind our council members' backs on anything. I know that the developers have reached out to each one of us individually, to get our input and feedback and our thoughts. And as everyone pretty well knows me, I don't hold back. I tell them exactly what I think should be done, and what I'd like to see done, and why I think it's done. And so, and not only did I do that, I certainly modified it and wrote it, and I sent it out to all my colleagues, so that they knew exactly what I was thinking, where I was coming from, and the direction I think we need to go on this project. So I just want to say for the record, I make sure my colleagues know exactly what I'm thinking, and why I'm thinking that way, and what I'd like to see get done. So I assure everyone that I have not done any negotiating outside the purview of my office that I hold, so...
Any further discussion on Councilwoman Washington's motion to delay? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on Councilwoman Washington's motion to delay for one week.
Okay.
No.
Ward?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Shob?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, 2-4.
Five.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Two to four.
The other one, you also go two to four. Yeah. We're all here.
Councilman Beckius?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend 22R-131, to include the future service limits map amendment to the comp plan, that is in your packet.
Second.
Moved in seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion on...
Could you repeat that number?
Yeah, that was said really quick.
22R-131, it's the motion to amend, one, for 22R-131.
For 7J?
For 7J, yes, ma'am.
Got it. Could you explain the changes?
Law Department?
Law Department is requesting these changes. I think that perhaps there was an error in the mapping from the original proposed, or the original map, in order to add Wilderness Park into the area as well. Director Carey here.
I would try to help with this. This is, there was the map that showed the actual change to the future service limit in the comprehensive plan, Exhibit C, was inadvertently left off of the packet. And so this is just acknowledging, it was referenced in the information, but it was not in the packet. So basically, just saying that that map is acknowledging that that's representing what was written in the language, so...
Any discussion?
Mr. Carey, do you have a copy of the map you can put on the overhead and point to?
I believe I do. And then, of course, now I'm not finding it.
Would you like the amendment, sir?
No. Thank you. It's this map. And just to be clear, what this, all this is doing, it's just saying that the park land area, because it's getting surrounded by the city, is being brought into this future service limit. This doesn't annex it at this time. It doesn't change its zoning, it doesn't change its land use. It's just saying that it's inside the future service limit, mainly because it's being surrounded by the city, obviously. It doesn't mean, also, to be clear, does not mean we will be developing the park land area at all.
Councilwoman Raybold?
So help us understand, also, because we're calling out the park, that it is part of the service area. What does that bode for future development on the other southern areas surrounding the park? What does that, does it change anything about future development that will, looks like it wants to continue to move on the south area?
This change doesn't change any of that, no. The plan that's in place is already, will still be in place, and it doesn't really change the development plan itself.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
One more time? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on motion to amend 22R-131.
Yes.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven, zero.
I have a question, uh, maybe for David? And maybe for law.
You have a motion?
Oh.
You just motioned to amend, now we got the original.
Now we're back to the main motion.
Okay, we're at the original motion. Yes, so... Okay, I, I still have a question for 7J. This is the comprehensive plan amendment. In this map, as you, uh, if you have the thing, I have a question.
Thank you.
Well, I've got a map here.
Just looking at, is that what you're referring to?
No.
Okay.
No, it was the brightly colored lots of orange. That's the one. All right. On this map, where we have said where, uh, future residential urban density is and where we've said green spaces, and I see all the changes that are being proposed there, I look at, um, the area where Wilderness Crossing is and its residential urban density, and I look across First Avenue on the east side of First Avenue and see what looks like, uh, the area that's surrounded by Wilderness Park. And I see that listed as urban density into the future. And I also know that that parcel is in, uh, the priority list of future acquisitions for, uh, addition to Wilderness Park. And it seems like it is a very weird, uh, juxtaposition. It's, we want it to be future residential density and we want to, uh, potentially acquire it by willing seller to the park. How do those things jive? Can we make, uh, an amendment to take what we have listed in other longstanding plans for Wilderness Park? Can we make it green space?
Uh, I can take a stab at that. Just for clarity's sake, this, this parcel here, um, is representative of the Danker property. It is currently identified in the plan as urban residential, so that is not a proposed change at this time with this comprehensive plan amendment. We're just reflecting what the plan already says about that. I think that there is some opportunity to continue discussions about, uh, in the future that we might have an opportunity to change that to green space or something different than urban residential. Right now, it's reflecting the fact that it has a home on it and it has potential to be something different. But I think that there also is the opportunity to continue some discussions to see if there's a way to, uh, have that property, like some other properties that have been either obtained or, uh, been given the conservation easement next to the park. Uh, because this is identified, as you noted, um, in the Wilderness Park master plan for acquisition or some type of, um, conservation. So I think that that conversation can remain open to be, continue to this, be discussed. And I think it's an opportunity that if we can get something agreed to for that property over the long term, certainly we can bring that back in the future to identify it as different than urban residential.
Well, I'd like to keep a marker on that?
Yep.
And keep the discussion open, I think that...
I have a question, maybe for Director Lynn Johnson and even, maybe Director Carey? So this is talking about changing the tiers of priority. And it sounds like we have time. So the question, um, to you, Lynn, is how much time do you think it would be needed to up, update the Wilderness Park study that was done in, in 1999? To talk about the entire park area, the future tier growth in that area, uh, and particularly some of the parcels that we have purchased as conservation easements? And, you know, again, going back to an environment study, environmental impact study. I think you probably know a lot about those. And then, so how much time would it take to do a comprehensive study based on some of the changes that we're looking at for moving in the hierarchy of priorities?
It, it's a guess on my part, based on the length of time that it's, it's taken to complete other studies. For example, uh, the study that was done on the Greenway along Haynes Branch, I would guess we're talking six months perhaps to get through that process. And that, and then that is an estimate on my part.
Okay, thank you. David, would, would you have some input on that one, too?
Yeah, I, I think that that's fair. I think it's something that we, is, a good definition of what we're studying is always really important for anything like that. So six months, it, it may take a little bit longer than that, but I think six months is a good starting point for thinking about how long it would take.
And did the city commission Olson Associates to do the resilience study on Salt Creek? Did the city commission that, do you know? Or who, who would have paid for the study? I don't...
Yeah, I, we could look into that.
Okay.
Provide that in the future, that information.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We're still on the main motion. We voted in the last one, on the main motion for 6J.
7J?
7J.
Oh, Councilman Beckis?
Yeah, in, unless we have any other motions to amend, I'll go ahead and speak on this one and the upcoming, um, um, votes as well, if we're ready.
I think, I think we're going to read the next votes, aren't we? My motion was to delay all three, but I'd like us to be able to address each other one separately, too.
I'll just speak for, for all of them and get it done and over with. And if people want to speak on each individual one, that's fine.
Okay.
You know, I think there's been a lot of misinformation about Wilderness Crossing and its proposal. Um, and, and because of that, I think there's been a lot of anxiety, um, about what could happen to Wilderness Park if Wilderness Crossing is, um, implemented. And I just want to address some of those things because we've received a lot of feedback from constituents, but a lot of that feedback has been misinformation. So just for note, there is no parkland associated with Wilderness Crossing. This, the area to be developed is privately owned and is currently in row crop production. And I want to repeat that. The area to be developed is not Wilderness Park. And the city of Lincoln is not selling Wilderness Park. A lot of the feedback I've received via email, there are people out there that think that that's the case. That is not the case. You know, the planned unit development process allows for a broad review of a development plan. But not all of the impacts or workings of that plan, um, are developed at this point in time. And that's not abnormal. The watershed impacts, the, the grading plans, those still must be addressed in the future. Um, and if those, those plans and those impacts are not adequately addressed, the development will not proceed forward. That's a standard practice in the city of Lincoln. Director Carey is in charge of making sure that those things meet city standards. And I know through working with him for years, that he will make sure that those standards are met. And I have no question about that. You know, the other things that I wanted to note is that the developer's engineer has been quite clear from day one that he is using the NOAA Atlas 14 rainfall data in order to, to make sure that this development is protected, not going to flood. The data has been clear on that. Additionally, the, the city Parks and Rec Department, um, does not believe that this site, uh, would negatively impact Wilderness Park. Director Johnson has said that repeatedly. As a longtime advocate and leader of our city parks, I believe he would be quite honest if he felt otherwise. And also, I think it's, it's worth noting what the developer has agreed to do in order to minimize, uh, you know, whatever impact a housing development may have here. And that includes moving a street, uh, implementing buffers against the park, building fencing, altering lighting, um, and even restricting the, the planting of, of native species. I mean, there has been a lot of work over a lot of months being done on this plan. It didn't just come to city council. This has been months and months of planning and review with city staff to get to the point where we are today. You know, on a personal note, my, my husband and I use Wilderness Park regularly. At the height of the pandemic, we actually used it most days as I would get it out to, get out there to walk and sort out my thoughts. I also live by Wilderness Park and am thoughtful that Wilderness Park is a green space. Uh, but it's also a green space within a growing city. And it's next to houses like mine, but also businesses, schools, uh, train tracks, Highway 77. So it's not going to have the same characteristics of a rural park, but it's still a great park. And I care for the park just as much as many of you do. And I would not do anything that would negatively impact Wilderness Park. I do understand the anxiety being experienced in our community, but I want you to know that this will not ruin Wilderness Park. I am being, I am being thoughtful and deliberate. And the implication that I'm not doing the right thing is offensive. The protective measures placed by the city and the developer to ensure both the sanctity as well as the heritage of Wilderness Park are adequate. And they're being supported by our city professional staff and data. And it is because of these protections that, um, Wilderness Park will continue to be enjoyed for years to come and it can coexist peacefully with Wilderness Crossing. And that's why I'll be voting in support of these further motions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll on item 7J.
Ward?
I'm sorry, just...
Okay.
Yeah, uh, so we...
Main motion?
Yep, the main motion.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried five, two. We're calling item 7K, Annexation 21013, Application of Wilderness Crossings LLC to annex approximately 141.46 acres more or less on property generally located at the southeast corner of Highway 77 and West Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I would ask for the same consideration on the Danker property about annexation. I think that, uh, I understand the recognition that, oh, we're just going to annex a whole big block. That makes sense. I totally get why you want to do that. Usually when we annex property, we annex property that is surrounded by the city. So that the city's on three sides. In this instance, we're annexing a place that has city on the west side. But it does, but it, but it has county on the north, the east, and the south. And the Danker property is surrounded by county property entirely. First Street and then Wilderness Park on three sides. And I would just ask that we would give the same consideration that we're going to give, uh, on the comp plan amendment and not annex the Danker property.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I guess since, um, Director Carey, you're there, could you help us understand? Could you help us understand why, uh, the Danker property was put in to the annexation agreement?
Sure. I would first point out that not only the Danker property, but also, uh, property for the church to the south and then, um, property owned by the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation, all of that is proposed to be part of this annexation. And the, the purpose there is that, um, when we have a, a development like this come in, when it has other property that ends up being contiguous and makes sense to bring into the city at, at the same time, we do propose that very often. I guess I would, I would point out that, uh, be very clear, that the, the annexation of the, of the Danker property does not change the zoning on the Danker property, nor does it necessarily change the use on the Danker property. I think there's, uh, something to consider there that, uh, regardless of what would happen there, we would have city annexed, the, the road itself is being annexed as well. Or, well, actually, it's going, in the future, not too distant future, the road itself will be annexed as well. So that is something that we have to keep in mind, um, as the process moves forward. It's just, it's a typical way of doing it.
So I guess the reason why we asked those questions is because the Danker property is on the east side of the current First Street and on the, the side that Wilderness Park is on. And that's, that's still zone...
And I want to be clear, I think I, it might have sounded like I misspoke something. The, the right-of-way is being annexed for First Street with this. Uh, the, the vacation is not yet before us. So that's, there's a difference there. It's, it's similar to that the, the zoning on the, that property is not changing with annexation.
The zoning isn't changing and the use isn't changing, but, uh, does it have to hook up to, are they required to hook up to city services within a certain amount of time?
So what, what, what will happen eventually, and again, we talked earlier about there's going to be quite a bit of time before the development actually is in place. Our rules state that, uh, when you're within 300 feet of city utilities, that, that, that would necessitate a hookup if annexed.
Okay.
I think that in the future, it's fair to say that there will be that situation, but it's going to be several months, I can't tell you exactly when. It'll be quite a while before that situation is, is there facing the Danker property.
And, and the church as well?
And we, the, but, yes, sorry.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
A question, will the Parks and Rec Maintenance Facility have to hook up to city facilities? They're on the east side of First Street, just south of the Danker property.
Uh, I, I think that the opportunity will be there for that to happen. I think Lynn could speak to the, the value of doing that, um, for their services out there, but I, I haven't had that conversation with them.
Yeah, I think we may want to discuss the possibility of connecting this to city utilities there. The facility is on a well right now. Excuse me, and there's, there, I think there is some advantage to having access to city water. Uh, the rest of the, is on a septic system. And, um, and again, there probably is benefit at some point in the future to connecting that shop facility in, into sanitary sewer.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
So, Councilwoman Washington raised a good question. So why was that omitted? Why didn't we do a little carve-out for the, the, uh, Parks and Rec Maintenance Area and annex it, too?
David can help me with this, but, um, there's not a separate parcel. The, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility is not on a separate parcel. It's located on land that is part of that larger parcel that Wilderness Park is located on.
And I would just add to that, that certainly when the discussion at some point comes forward about the status of annexation of the park itself, obviously that piece, not that piece, but that area would be part of that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend 7K? Okay, uh, Councilwoman Raybold?
Well, I don't think we're amending 7K.
No, Councilwoman Washington, didn't you introduce the motion to...
And you seconded it, I think.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So any further discussion on Councilwoman's Wash, Councilwoman Washington's, uh, motion to amend that I believe to not annex the Danker property?
Okay, thank you.
Excuse the Danker property from annexation.
I'll second it if I didn't do it before.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll on the motion to amend.
Schob?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, two to five.
All right, back to the main motion of 7K. Any further discussion on 7K? Councilwoman Rebold?
Yes, I want to just reiterate that I will be voting no on this item for a lot of the reasons I've already expressed here tonight, but for a lot of the reasons I have shared with my colleagues via email as well.
Okay, any further discussion on 7K? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on 7K?
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Rebold?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two. Item 7L, changes on 21057, application of Wilderness Crossing LLC, the change from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District PUD Planned Unit Development for the Wilderness Crossing PUD for up to 575 residential units and 30,000 square feet for commercial floor area with requested waivers on the property generally located at 4575 South First Street and West Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckus. Councilwoman Rebold?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend number two.
Okay.
Motion to amend number two.
What is number two?
Number two.
We don't have a number. We have motion to amend number one on our desk.
We haven't seen.
I'm moving forward, motion to amend number two.
Is this a new motion?
This is a new motion.
We don't have it. I don't.
Thanks.
And it's basically to amend the conditions of the planned unit development.
Councilman Beckus?
Councilwoman Rebold, could you walk us through the changes? We also have a motion to amend on behalf of the developer that's been worked out through the city as well. And my understanding is that the developer and the city have come to an agreement on motion to amend number one. Could you walk us through the changes that you were proposing on motion to amend number two?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and I would need to have Sony or someone put this on the Elmo. So, and it, I know it's very difficult to see. Do you want me to zoom in? I think if you could zoom in really on the colored areas, and if you could turn it the other way, there you go, yeah, that way. So that's north and south, and you can see First Street. The relocated First Street is just to the left of all the colored lines. And then I can run through it rather quickly so that everybody is aware of some of the changes. The first change is asking to create a buffer area. This is something that I've sent my colleagues, but it would take that area from where you see the colored line, starting from the green line, to the relocated First Street. So that would become a new buffer area. And I'd ask David Carey to come up and help explain the actual square footage to us of what the green line represents, what the very narrow gray line represents, what the, I guess, is it orangish color line, and so that we would have a better idea of the depth that I'm asking to be created for a buffer.
The, just kind of reading off of this image, the green line is the remaining 33 feet of existing First Street right-of-way that is proposed to be retained as part of a buffer with the plan. There is a 10-foot additional setback that's in a light gray that's in between the green and the red. And the red is representative of the expected 22-foot rear yard setback, which is required based on the proposed depth of these lots. So in other words, the house would not be able to be built inside of that setback.
And then right next to what I, I'm not sure, could you show where would the proposed fence be located in what the applicant has presented to us before?
So at this point, the sessions have identified the fence would be along the red line, the beginning of the red line, which is effectively the back edge of the backyards.
So as we're looking at it, the fence would start from the red line, which would be 22 feet, plus the 10 feet for the buffer that the would be landscaped by the developer. So that's up to 32 feet, correct? Am I doing that right? Yeah, 32 feet. And then with the green, that would add an additional 33 feet of buffer. So that would be 55 feet of the buffer area from the fence.
I think that would be from the closest that the backs of houses could be. We're talking about the rear yard setback in the red area.
So the house could be built up to that pink line?
Yes.
So then the house would only be would be the 55 feet from, wait, the house would, so the house could be at the eastern edge of that 22 feet? Is that what you're saying? No.
Yes. No, no, no. It's got to, it can't go any closer than the western.
The 22 feet.
Correct. We, I, what I'm trying to explain, that there's where the fence would be would be the backyards, the edge of the backyard, it's not where the house would be.
Okay, so it's still 55, 55 feet of a buffer from a.
Effectively, you're going, the way that it's been discussed, you will have 43 feet using a remnant of the right-of-way for old First Street and then a 10-foot additional buffer. And then there would be a fence, and in that 43 feet is what's been discussed as having natural plantings as well as the ability to make sure drainage works correctly and things like that. Then you have another 22 feet minimum setback to the backs of houses. That's the rear yard setback that would be in place if those lots were there.
And then, then further, there's 67 feet further to the relocated First Street, that like to the curb on the east side. Is that correct? About 67 feet?
Yes, the 67 feet is representative of how far away the eastern right-of-way line of the realigned new First Street is with the existing western edge of existing First Street. So it's trying to give you an idea of how much further away traffic and lights from an active road would be moved over.
And then how far away would, does a house, how far away must that house be set back from the road or the curb? Let's say the curb.
For the front yard?
For the front yard setback.
I'd have to double-check exactly, but I believe it would be 20 feet.
Would be 20 feet?
Yeah.
So then, you know, the house would be, you know, just a little bit further than the 55 feet of buffer from the park area, if you look at it that way.
Yeah.
Okay. And so my proposal that is before you in motion to amend number two talks about taking that buffer all the way to the right-of-way from the east curb. So, which means that there would be additional homes eliminated all on that east side, all along First Street. And thank you for pointing that out. So all those homes would be eliminated. And what you would have is relocated First Street, you would have the right-of-way, and then you would have the developer's fence, so that there would be an additional at least 30 feet, maybe a little bit more than 30 feet, to create a buffer of probably about 85 feet to 100 feet, it's hard to determine, to help address and preserve and protect Wilderness Park. That's number one. Number two is talking about in that northeast quadrant, up at the very top by the roundabout that it abuts Pioneer's and also the relocated First Street, that's multifamily housing. And the proposal that is in the motion to amend number two would take that multifamily housing and ask the developer to take that and relocate it all the way to the southwest quadrant, as far away from Wilderness Park as possible and closer towards Highway 77 in that corner. So that's item number two. The other, item number three, we talked about, you know, making the covenants and conditions very clear, but it would require that the developer provide law department evidence of those covenants, which they typically do, but that they are all filed against each one of those additional final-platted documents. And then it certainly incorporates a lot of the suggestions from the developers concerning outdoor lighting, invasive species. And then the fourth element is talking about that the developer shall demonstrate to law that a duly incorporated homeowners association has been formed and that said organization is authorized to enforce the covenants, to make sure that there is no invasive species being planted and that the light controls are in place and are actually enforced and that, of course, some of the other ones that the developer will also have the fence and maintain the fence. And so those are the four elements in this motion to amend number two, that would basically create an additional buffer and create the safeguards that the developer, the permittee, would be obligated to fulfill concerning the covenants and the enforcement of those covenants.
Councilwoman Beckus?
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Rebold, on the plan that was that Director Carey was showing previously, how many lots does that eliminate?
I think just under 20, is that correct? So it would reduce the units that are planned from 575 to 555. If they relocate the multifamily housing to that southwest corner, I had encouraged that that northwest vacated area be a community garden, or it would be wonderful if the developer would consider having some affordable housing there, too.
Okay, so your plan is to would move the multifamily away from the arterial and embed it within the neighborhood?
It would be moving it from the, correct, it would be moving it from that northeast corner to, oh, yeah, to the southwest corner. But as you can see, there's sufficient roadway planned for that type of development. And I can't imagine the number of units, but if there's 575 units planned between the three build, you know, there's three buildings of multifamily housing, plus all the town homes, single-family, I can't imagine it, you know, would have maybe more than 125 units. I don't, I don't know how many levels they're planning on building. I don't think that was included.
No, I was just trying to think out loud, you know, usually when I think of multifamily, being up against the arterial as opposed to taking that traffic through the neighborhood, it's generally a widely accepted concept. And then Director Carey, could you, or Mr. C. or what have you, you know, it's pretty typical in the city of Lincoln and required by redevelopment agreements that HOAs are established primarily in today's world to help with detention or retention cells on a permanent and ongoing basis. Would there be any reason that the city would consider a waiver of an HOA on this property?
I can have Tim come up. Well, I think there's some context to the answer, too, in the sense that there is likely another motion to amend that includes language about requirements that the HOA enforce certain conditions. And so I think that there is intent from the developer to make sure that that HOA is created and is maintained and follows the potential approved requirements of approval.
I don't know that I would say much more than that, other, I guess, Tim C., City Law Department, 585 South 10th. I think it is common note that the HOA may not have the control of those covenants immediately. They may be left in the hands of the developer to do that enforcement. And so that's, I think that's the, that's the item that's added with this, with Councilwoman Rebold's motion to amend.
And Director C., what would be the recourse?
I don't get director status yet, but.
Sorry, did I call you director? I apologize. Mr. C.
I appreciate it. The recourse would be the developer's going to be in charge of enforcing those covenants prior to the items being handed over to the HOA. So either way, there is, there's an entity to do so. It's either the developer or the HOA. Thank you.
Mr. C., so what happens once the development is completed and there is a HOA established? Who then assumes that authority of enforcement in many situations? In most major.
The HOA will traditionally take over the enforcement authority, which is a group of homeowners in the area.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilwoman Rebold's amendment? Councilwoman Washington? Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Rebold, just a quick summary, eliminate lots, increase buffer, give HOA more power, or take away public?
Well, enforcement power.
That's basically what your amendment does.
Correct. It creates a buffer that is greater than what the developer had proposed. And I know we talked about what is the appropriate buffer, and I am not sure what the appropriate buffer is. I know Councilman Beckus had mentioned that your house is like 400 feet from Wilderness Park and that there are some buffers there. So that's 400 feet. This is asking that we consider up to 100 feet more of buffer. And I'm hoping that we have a really good dialogue going forward, talking about what is the appropriate buffer, and that's why environmental study for the rest of Wilderness Park would be very helpful. What is the essential buffer to help preserve and protect as best as we can? And so when you said 400 feet, I thought, well, I'd love it to be 400 feet. In the Nine Mile Prairie, I know they would have loved it to be 2.8 miles. Well, you know, that's a big buffer. Likely that's not going to happen with Nine Mile Prairie either. But what is the appropriate buffer that we should all consider? What are we willing to do? What is the developer willing to do and take on this added responsibility that we're entrusting you now to preserve and protect Wilderness Park?
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion on Councilwoman Rebold's motion? Okay, seeing none, let's go. You good? Okay, let's go ahead.
The only thing that I would mention is I'll vote in opposition to this. I, I'm not going to sit here and make up rules on the dais, on the fly.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll on Councilwoman Rebold's motion.
McGinnis?
No.
Shob?
No.
Rebold?
Yes.
Washington?
I'm voting yes because I'm really. Sorry, microphone. I'm going to vote yes because of the buffer.
No.
Ward?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, two to five.
Now we're back to the main motion, 7L. Any further discussion on item 7L?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Beckus?
and as vetted through city staff over the past week to make changes and amendments and to adopt the substitute ordinance.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. C.
Yeah, Councilwoman Beckus, just for the record, can we make clear that I think that's the one that reads motion to amend number one?
Yes, I'm sorry. Motion to amend number one as presented in our packet today.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington, I believe?
I think it was, I could do it, but I'm, I think I heard another voice. Oh.
Okay. Seconded by Councilwoman Ward, then. Any discussion on this motion to amend?
We, this is, this is where I can say thank you to the developer for agreeing to change the lighting, to do the swale, to work on invasive species. I kind of had an idea that I wouldn't have, there wouldn't be great enthusiasm for making bigger changes. And so I am, I am glad for the mitigating changes that were made by the developer to try and diminish harm to Wilderness Park and to the existing use on the Danker property. Thank you. And I hope that as we move forward with the PUD and the plat and the watershed planning that we can get as much as we can to assure the public that we are taking care of something that people hold very close at heart. And, you know, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about the cultural significance, but it's also a goal here to really look at that and to actually put action behind our words, because our word of cultural resources, not when the historical and cultural use is living and existing. And I'm just that we will be in every significant things.
Us and getting our input and feedback. I do respect that tremendously. But how to, that sometimes a developer is expected, we hold you all to a higher standard and all developers to a higher. One of the letters that we, emails that we received said, I believe that a developer that wants to create the entire community, the developing a park or open space that the public values a great deal. Need to look into doing an environmental impact study going forward for the other areas of the park, that we can do what we can to protect and preserve them and really ask and demand more of our developers. I know you have provided some concessions, but I would have liked to have seen a lot more in showing your willingness to do whatever you can to preserve and protect the park, but not only for the beauty of the park, but because of the sacredness and the cultural awareness that has been raised about how important it is. And that's the least that we could do.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the motion to amend?
McInnes?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Beckus?
Yes.
Raybold?
No, because it doesn't go far enough.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Okay, I'm going to speak on this part, since we're talking about the housing aspect. Everyone has a right to a home that they can afford. Everyone has the right to not have their cost of rent prevent them from buying food, medicine, or paying for utilities. And unfortunately, that is happening in our city. The lack of housing supply in our city is a contributing factor to the high rent that we experience. There is more demand for housing than units available. And as we all know, when there is a lack of supply and a high demand, the only people who have access to it and the only people who are able to attain it are people who are wealthy. As a social worker, I work daily with folks who struggle to afford their rent. This is probably the hardest vote that I've had to take while in the council. I've had a lot of very close friends reach out to me and encourage me to vote a certain way. I've taken this seriously. I have been to the site multiple times and last night I was able to, a gentleman in the audience was able to give me a little bit of a tour. I've reflected, I've meditated, and I keep coming back to the stories and the struggles that I see daily of our residents who are living in poverty. We have an opportunity to increase housing stock, and I would not be doing my duty as a social worker if I took a vote that contributed to a lack of housing stock in our city. I'm not going to reiterate the points about misinformation regarding the development, and I do understand that this vote may end some of my friendships that I have with people, and that breaks my heart. The easy vote would be to vote this down, and the community deserves an explanation for why I'm voting the way that I am. I hope that I've been able to explain myself, and I hope that we can continue to work through this. Thank you. May we please call the roll?
This is on the main motion.
Main motion.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
McInnes?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to. Item 7M is approving the annexation and change of zone agreement between the city and Wilderness Crossing LLC for the property generally located west of South First Street and South Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Beckus. Any discussion, Councilwoman Raybold?
I'm, I'm glad we've had this discussion, I really am. And I have to tell you, I'm pro-development. Don't get me wrong, I am a big supporter of development. I voted no, and I will be voting no on this, because we can do better, we can ask more, and we should be doing that on every development that abuts a lake or a park, such as Wilderness Park. Wilderness Park is incredibly special for all the testimony that we have heard. I would have loved to see the developer incorporate affordable housing, because we know that's the price point of housing that is so sorely lacking in our city and that is so sorely needed. And I am, I'm really hopeful that our developers have heard the gracious remarks by our council chair and, and take that to heart, to make sure that the townhomes and the multifamily housing and the single-family homes are affordable for those most in need. I felt that the developer did not go far enough with a buffer. A greater buffer would be important for the wildlife, for the natural habitat that is existing there. I, too, drove by it last night, and it was about 6:30 at night, and it was beautiful. I saw this amazing hawk fly above, and it seemed to hover about wherever I went. And to me, I don't necessarily believe in symbols, but that to me was a clear sign that I should step up and say these things on behalf of so many, but so many of those habitants, habitants in the park, such as the hawks and the wildlife that don't have a voice on how we can do better to protect their environment, for all the reasons I've said before. So I would have loved to vote in favor of this, trust me. We do need more housing, there's no doubt. We need more affordable housing. I would have loved to have support this, but for all the, the deficiencies that I see and for it not going far enough, I'm going to vote no.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Washington, then we'll do Councilman Shob and Councilwoman Ward.
I, this is the first development that I've actually voted no against in my years sitting on council, and I, I did vote no on a, a project when I was county planning commissioner. Voted no on it twice before it came back with something that I could vote yes. And I wasn't alone, it took them three times to get it right. I am going to vote yes on this agreement, though, because this is the only agreement we have right now that's, puts into place those things that we say that we want, even the small things that mitigate on this project. I would have wanted more, just like Councilwoman Raybold, but this is what we have right now, and I'm afraid that we don't have everything that we needed to get here. I am going to press hard on conservation design standards. I'm going to press hard on a new master plan for Wilderness Park that looks at other values besides flood protection and incorporates those into acquisition and the dreams that we have for how we manage Wilderness Park into the future. This was an incredibly difficult place for me to be. I, I believe that conservation and development can live next door to each other, I really do. But we didn't have the tools in place to ask the developer to look at conservation design any more than what we got. And for that, I'm very sorry.
Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. Councilman Beckus, Raybold, McInnes, Bowers, and Ward, I appreciate all your time and effort on this one. I struggle with this a lot. Saturday morning I got up and I, Councilwoman Washington at Trendwood Park, where we talked about the park dedication and a new path, and we spent time with the community, and I had this conversation with many people there. I left there and I went to the Earth Day celebration, where I had this conversation with many other residents of our community. And I heard from a lot of people. As you guys know, my email box is inundated with emails. The council packet ones I'm still getting to, the ones that wrote me individually, I responded to most of you. But no matter what we do here, someone's going to be angry with us. I'm sure you guys are aware there are 291,082 people in Lincoln Lancaster County, 291,082. And no matter what we do, any day of the week, 150,000 of those people are mad at us. When I ran for reelection, which was just a year ago, I got 26,000 votes. And some of those were people who agree with me, some of those people who didn't agree with me. But I represent all 291,082 people in this community, and I have to work to plan for a future for the next 100,000 that show up and 100,000 after that. And that means making some tough decisions now that are not popular, that we won't remember in 10 years, and in 20 years people will be thankful we did. And that includes protecting the park, that produce, protecting the rest of the city from flooding. That includes doing a conservation design plan, that includes amending the comprehensive plan, and lots of other things. I know it doesn't seem pleasant at the moment that I'm going to vote to support this, but this is just the start of working harder tomorrow to make our community better, more inclusive, and a growing community for everyone who lives here, all 291,082 and more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like so many of my colleagues, this also has been probably the issue that's kept me up at night most of all, except for the mask, defending the mask mandate and being under recall. So it's been really hard. I also, like everyone, have driven by the project as recently as on my way to this meeting today, just to drive by it again, so. But just a couple of thanks to the applicant, I want to thank you. You did make significant changes along the way, we know that you did. That is valued, I do value that. I know that some of my peers do as well. Thank you for those. To the Friends of Wilderness Park and other supporters, I feel your passion, I see it, I don't disagree with you. Like Councilman Shob said, it, it is hard, and I've always am looking for the balance, and there's not a lot of balance on this project. In the end, what I look for is, is it fair? Not always, hardly ever is it fair. But the truth of the matter remains that this project has been aligned with our comprehensive plan. We've heard that over and over, it's been in the works for 20 years, this has been months in the coming, and we've had a lot of time to think about it and go forward. All of us here have supported the mayor's housing action plan, and this community needs housing. It's never where we want to put it necessarily. So with that, thanks to the directors, I trust your advice. Mr. C., thank you, to our city attorney and others that have guided us along the way. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Public hearing for this was last week. We're going to call the roll in a second. After we call the roll, we're going to take a 15-minute break. So after we call the roll, we'll go ahead and take recess till eight 10. All right, can we please call the roll?
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
McInnes?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one.
We're going to go to recess, and we'll come back at 8:10. In the end, what I look for is, is it fair? Not always. Hardly ever is it fair. But the truth of the matter remains that this project has been aligned with our comprehensive plan. We've heard that over and over. It's been in the works for 20 years. This has been months in the coming, and we've had a lot of time to think about it and go forward. All of us here have supported the mayor's housing action plan, and this community needs housing. It's never where we want to put it necessarily. So with that, thanks to the directors. I trust your advice. Mr. C., thank you. To our city attorney and others that have guided us along the way. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion?
Public hearing for this was last week. We're going to call the roll in a second. After we call the roll, we're going to take a 15-minute break. So after we call the roll, we'll go ahead and take recess till 8:10. All right? Can we please call the roll?
Chubb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
We're going to go to recess, and we'll come back at 8:10.
Thank you, Jay.
All right, Sony?
Okay. Next on our agenda is Section 8, Resolutions First Readings, our items 8A through 8D.
The public comment section. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at the open microphone session. Again, part of the rules in decorum of the council is not that is on this agenda, not planned for a future agenda. So we can't have public comment about the Wilderness Park development that we just voted on. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak, regardless of the number of topics. Open microphone sessions are on the second and last sessions, meetings of the month. When you come up, please state your name and your address, and you've got five minutes. Buzz will go off when you have a minute left.
My name's Adam Hints. I'm president of Friends of Wilderness Park, 1919 Prospect Street. Wanted to key you guys in on a 50-year anniversary of Wilderness Park celebration on May 21st at 1:00 PM at the 14th Street entrance. It's going to be a huge celebration, because you don't get 50 years all that often, so it's, the time is ripe to celebrate as a community. And, you know, maybe we'll talk a little bit about creating buffers and environmental studies and the steps forward to truly protect Wilderness Park from the comprehensive plan and through, through government. That's my hope. And I want to say thank you to everybody watching at home, and it's been a part of democracy. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to address the council at this time?
What was the rules again?
You have five minutes to speak, regardless.
What was that?
Oh, it can't be on this agenda or planned for a future agenda. So you can talk about anything except anything that was on the agenda today or plan to be on a future agenda item.
Okay.
Make sense?
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay.
I want to invite you all, three forty-nine South First Street, one S T. Please come and look, Jane Raybold. Remember when you did the vote? You know the environmental damage that's done over there? You're going to go to federal prison because you're the same kind of politician Jeff Fortenberry is, right? He was on the Lincoln City Council, two thousand, two thousand and five. That little neighborhood was pristine condition. It's a good thing you got four hundred feet. You know what they allowed us? Fifty. And then you know what she did? She voted for seven feet. Now, my husband is now called collateral damage because of you, and we buried Lisa Jo Spad, S P A D T. And see that man? C- uh, Parker, badge number fifteen seventy-seven, thirty-three pounds of methamphetamine, three houses from us. Yeah, I got something. And guess what happened on Thanksgiving? Two doors down, felony stop because of you. So you know what? Please don't plan on being a politician because you're the kind of politician that needs to be with Jeff Fortenberry. Now, you, young man, I heard some really nice stuff about you. Now, I don't need to know what you guys do with your PPs. I promise you I don't. This is a federal-funded building. You ask me what I do with my PP, you and I will be in front of a judge. Now, the discrimination that you did, my zip code is six-eight-five-oh-eight. It is called a homestead, and the people that were born nineteen twenty-two, nineteen twenty-five. Like I said, my husband ends up dead, you better be ready because I'm going bankrupt you and your family. Now, please come by, check out three-four-nine South, one S T. And guess what? There's not enough funding for the firemen's, enough funding for the policemen's. I had to take a twelve-gauge to get in the streets so the firemen's didn't get shot at because nobody seems to be able to get them bulletproof equipment. But, oh, we got TIF. Thank you, young lady, and thank you, young man. Now, I don't have any idea how old you are. You, I could care less, okay? But I'm so proud of you, the little person that killed themselves. I heard you did some really nice stuff, and you didn't get in front of the paper and say, "Oh, look how wonderful I is." And you did not ban me from this meeting, ever. It takes a court order, and I don't think you got enough money to put me in court. Now, you, I will bankrupt. You understand that? My husband is one of you. Nineteen seventy-one Lincoln High graduate, one hundred and first airborne, Germany, nineteen seventy-one. How dare you? But hey, he's collateral damage, isn't he? So in your family, see, we're going to be in court, aren't we? Yeah, we are. Know why I'm going first? See if I pass out. See this phone? Has United States State Department numbers, and that ma- you captain investigator, fifteen seventy-seven. He's got to stay with my blankety-blank-blank body, and my brother will shut down your town. There's no oxygen in our groundwater because of you. But hey, do I shop at your stores? No. They smell like maggots. We're going to boycott you. Thank you. I appreciate you guys. And you, young man, and you. Now, you, he thought I was a waitress, really? You think I'd be a waitress? I'm the one that leaves the hundred-dollar tip so you don't spit in my food. I'm not one of you. But when I got here, here, please come by because you know the buffer here, you ready? Two thousand, Jeff Fortenberry was what, a politician on the city council from two thousand to two thousand and five. It's going to be a temporary batch plant. Please come by, okay? Because when you see what you see, we're going to be what? Am I crazy? I'm so damn pissed off I can't see straight. But hey, I would, you know what? I would buy you a lot of money. I actually, your waitresses knew me. How come? I have truck driver brothers. Yeah, we're going to boycott you. There's no oxygen in our water because of you. Thank you, young man. I appreciate what you did. You didn't know that I knew, did you? Yeah, somebody came and told me. I said, "You make a good senator, won't you?" Thank you, love.
Thank you.
Mayor, governor, which one be here? You know how it works? Sure it is. You know how it works? Three-four-nine South First Street, and the discrimination that you did on the Gonzalez family, oh, it's all over the internet, isn't it? Yeah. Guess what? I don't internet. Would you like to know what Jane Raybold and Carl Eskridge did? Oh, they had to do an ordinance so nobody could do electronic transmission to them. I don't internet. I got twenty-five phones and I don't have time. But I'll tell you what, investigator, Scott Parker, badge number fifteen seventy-seven, deserves a raise. Call it TIF. Like I said, you better pray to your god my husband doesn't drop dead. They're shutting down your airport as we speak.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Three-four-nine South First Street, please get there.
I didn't know we can do that. Hi there, everyone. I'm Chandra Michelle Walker, AKA known as Michelle Skywalker. I live at fifty-two oh-one West Crawl Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I just want to introduce myself as the, I'm the new issue committee chair for the Lancaster Democratic County, um, party. And so, you know, I feel like a little, you know, I feel like it's a power play that they put me in that position because I have to review and make tough decisions. And so I just want to let you guys know, introduce you guys, that, um, we made the decision to rescind, um, Chapter Eleven, the Fairness Housing Act, on behalf of Lancaster County Party. So we will be delivering letters soon about it. So I just want to let you know. And it's just, you know, my personal experience is, you know, I know what it feels like to be oppressed. I know what it feels like to be discriminate against. I am from a community that nobody really hears our voices, and tonight was a prime example that our voices was not even mentioned or really heard. And, you know, I still fight for those who needs their voice to be heard. And so that's why, you know, I took that challenge on for that, you know, with the Lancaster County Party wasn't favorable to a lot of our members. But I know that this fairness ha- act has to be favor- equal to everybody in the city council. So I just want you guys to, I guess, give you a heads up that that letter will be coming. Um, and I just hope the city works on, the city council works on listening to more people's voices that don't be heard. Like I said, I'm a native community voice, and we're always neglected time after time. But just introducing myself. So thank you, guys.
Thanks so much, Michelle.
Good evening. My name's Dylan Lenowski. I live at forty-seven hundred South First Street. Um, I just wanted to thank you all for, um, for these opportunities to voice our opinions. Um, I just wanted to, uh, mention briefly that my hope is that, um, uh, now and in the future, that, uh, that the land can be considered, uh, as much, have as much important, uh, importance as the people that, that live on it. Um, and that it be seen as, as having its own personhood and having its own rights, just as people do. Um, there's so many organisms that we don't even know about that live in the dirt, that live in the tree bark, um, that all contribute to our well-being and our livelihood, and we don't even know what they're doing for us. And so I would ask that maybe at some point, uh, before you, the city could come up with a plan to incorporate the rights of nature into, um, into the city plan so that those things can have a voice just as much as we all do because their voice is just as important as our voice. Um, and right now, I think they're, tonight, I think we saw that they're being underrepresented, um, you know, on multiple levels. Um, and I also, I would implore, uh, all of us to slow down and to take slow, measured steps when it comes to, um, interfering with some of the processes that happen within nature. Um, I realize that there's a lot of pressure that we're all under to, um, to, uh, move forward with housing and development and all these things. Um, but I think for the future, a broader perspective and probably a more important perspective is what are we going to lose? And what are our children going to lose? And seven generations down the road, what are they going to lose? Um, some of the things that were talked about, uh, tonight are irreversible. And so, um, it's very important that we consider that. I also wanted to, uh, mention, just by chance, um, in the role of this other issue, there was somebody's letter got in there about the garbage trucks, and I just wanted to give my opinion on garbage trucks. Uh, one, please, one per alley, one per service area, please. Uh, we don't need four garbage trucks going down the same alley every morning. Uh, I, you know, uh, I realize that it gives lots of business owners more opportunities, but, uh, it's annoying as hell, and it's hard on the streets, it's hard on the neighborhood, it's hard on, again, all the creatures that live in the alleys, big and small. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Wale Grayberg, thirteen twenty-four, South Eighteenth Street, apartment two. After tonight's vote, I was pretty upset, and it, I probably won't have much say to say here. Um, but if you would, uh, give a moment of silence to the native voices that were silenced here tonight, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jimmy?
Am I able to get audio if I show a video on this?
Oh, that I don't know. Yeah.
Sure.
Is there any vulgar language that we should be aware of?
No.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Yeah, it's all right. I'll just, I can just tell you. Jimmy Light, fight the good fight. Um, you're, I made these myself. I'm Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm your writing candidate. I'm becoming sheriff of Lancaster County, and, uh, I'm going to use, um, I don't need your money, your donations. I'm not doing it that way. I'm going to implement the crypto and then the education on the legality of the monetary system to pull this beast out by the root. Because I shouldn't be able to speak up here or at any future, uh, meeting if we actually abide by that ordinance. Because money is, according to John Adams, "All of the perplexities, confusion, and distress in America arise not from defects in our Constitution, not for want or honor or virtue, so much as from downright ignorance of the nature of money, credit, and circulation." Maybe, uh, hex to the moon, a little passive income for the developers, uh, could take the burden off why they want, uh, the prices so high. I don't know, you know, other creative solutions. This is a great book. This is a necessity. I learned a lot at UPS and, uh, being part of the union. If you don't know your history, or if you don't know your contract, your Bible, the corporation will use it against you. This is not something they teach in elementary school how to file a motion, right? I had to scramble and learn all this myself through trial and error, and, uh, just, the illusion of separation is irrelevant, and unity is not known by defeat. I'm not a, I'm not a low-low, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a demon or a republicher, and I'm not here to throw stones at anybody. This is not to condemn or convert anybody. We're all Lincolnites here. And I believe the, the, the device of the mind with this party system and the money, it's just, these are old traditions that need amendments, not to destroy them, but to fulfill. The old word is good, it just needs a new youthful interpretation. Um, I have some special books here. This is a well-documented, I posted this one other time. These are questions we need to ask ourselves. Let's see. And then, to finish it off, a little fun fact about the man that the city's named after, the star city, the sower of seed, Lincoln. President Abraham Lincoln, he did something that was not taught in the history books or is maybe readily known or apparent. He gave us the Thirteenth Amendment, "Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude shall be enacted unless duly convicted of a crime." He gave us the end of that amendment, the ni- neither involuntary servitude, because the bankers came and tried to plunge our country into a compounding debt with a twenty-six percent interest on the tax. And then, so there's no reserves. Mathematically, it's impossible. You give them a hundred bucks, they give you a thousand, and you have to pay the thousand back with the tax. Fractional reserve banking, you suck. Thank you. Sheriff Jimmy Light, look for me. Hex the Establishment, Hex the Establishment is my YouTube channel. All of this is on my YouTube, and will be, I have a bunch of more content to drop about Lincoln, a bunch of interesting stuff that everyone's going to love. And, uh, I, everyone doesn't get paid enough. We're all completely poor and broke if we actually follow the law because the money is not legal. And then, let's get the audit. I walk into my courtroom, I walk into the courtroom, I had court, obviously for something, and I walk into the door. This Nebraska, the Nebraska attorney, the county attorney, state attorney, signals to me to take off my hat. Excuse me. Take off my hat. You're gonna, I walk through the door, I'm innocent until proven guilty, and my liberty is infringed upon, my freedom of expression. The youth are colorful. We express ourselves through our wear, our garment. That old tradition of taking off my, that's not your church. I paid for that house. That tradition comes from knights because there's such an education gap and a power struggle. The knight, you saw a knight, you were scared for your life. So the knight took off his helmet to show you, I'm not here to kill you.
Hey, Jimmy, we're at your five minutes, so if you could...
Yeah. I appreciate you. Appreciate all you. James Michael Bowers, for the record, was the only one that took the time to look at this. Every single one of these council members has been served with the history, so they cannot say, "I don't know." It's the history of the money. You don't know your history, you're bound to repeat it. You don't know your history, you're bound to repeat it. Blessed love. Kedama wa haile se la siat. Ja rostefarat. Blessed love.
Don't forget your phone.
Respect.
Thanks, Jimmy. Is there anyone else I would like to address the council at this time? Lou?
Before I begin, may I ask you to set the timer for 3 minutes and 30 seconds instead of the 4 minutes, please?
Oh, sure.
There is a reason for that, that I would ask that you accommodate that, please.
3:30?
Thank you.
Give me a second.
Good evening again, council members here of the City of Lincoln. My name is Lou Brats. And as I heard earlier, I'm supposed to give you a title, but I was taught long ago that titles are good, but purpose is better. And my purpose tonight is to once again speak about the hunger problems that we are having, not only in this city, but across the country. And why tonight, and I bring to a different subject, is because we just passed Earth Day. And Earth Day presented an opportunity, not for us, not for us to only meet and greet Innovation Park, but also to consider the things that we can do. Food insecurity and ecology actually go hand in hand in many ways. And I have, I'm going to cite some statistics that come from the USDA, the EPA, the UN's Food and Agricultural Org, the World Wildlife Fund, and Feeding America. First, the number of food insecure is expected to double from 2018 in our country to an estimated 50 million Americans. But that was before putting into calculations the amount of corporate greed, i.e. inflation, that has been happening on the food costs across this country. With that food, unfortunately, America wastes over one-third of our food supply. We are one of the most wasteful countries when it comes to edible food in the world. With, with that one-third of our food supply, it actually breaks down to an average of 219 pounds per person of food wasted every year. In other words, you would take somebody like me, and then you would add three sacks of potatoes. That's how much food is going. This excess food ends up primarily in our municipal landfills, like ours, where it is, that excess food is actually the number-one thing, taking up the space of our landfills that we continue, or y'all continue, to try to figure out how you're going to get more and more space for the landfills. The number-one thing in there is excess food. Almost 50% of that food comes from the restaurant, grocery store, and food services, different areas of our economy. And surprisingly, grocery stores lose about 30% of their food on a yearly basis to it being past date or not being able to be sold anymore. But I'll leave the fine print to you on why it's only, why it's 30%. Okay. So once there, once that food is in the landfill, that excess food helps the landfills become the third-largest cause of methane gas emissions in this country. The third-largest. And if you have read the IPCC report, then you will understand that methane gas is actually one of the most harmful things that we put into our environment on a year-to-year basis. And we have been far behind the idea of counting methane gas and recognizing the situation that has. But these mentioned numbers do not take into account the wasted water, fuel, land, and other resources that are not, I repeat, not limitless. The production pollution cost of this excess food is equal to the emissions of 37 million cars traveling on the road every year. To reiterate that point, the excess food cost being produced that goes into the trash already starts with a 37 million car equivalent of CO2 and other things into the environment. So, in closing, I hope that you all will take, take a look at this. This is from the EPA. This is their idea for an excess food waste recovery system. Do I got to turn the right way?
It'll come up in just a second. There you go.
Yep. The number-one thing that they say that we should do to save food is to reduce the amount of food we're making, so we're not just throwing it away. But that's not happening, and quite frankly, a lot of businesses will do that anyways to cut their own costs, you know? They don't want to have food coming in. But the number-two thing that the EPA recommends is that we feed hungry people. That we take that food and we give it to hungry people. I'm not asking for anything that came up out of my head. I'm asking for what the government says. To end, because it is Earth Day, because I'm up here talking about this, because of the things that are going on in our world, I would actually like to recognize and ask for, I know we've had one moment of silence, but I was actually planning on asking for another. And this one is for three particular people. David Buckel, who is an LGBT QIA rights and environmental lawyer, who, who took upon the act of self-immolation in Prospect Park, Brooklyn on August 14th, 2018. Wen Allen Bruce, who just this last Friday lit himself on fire in an act of political protest at the United States Supreme Court, trying to get this government to recognize the threat of climate change and how real it is. And last but not least, John Trumbull, who is a volunteer firefighter, firefighter, who died this weekend serving as a spotter in the wildfires that are going on in this state, that somehow or another that we still have to come here and beg to have all of y'all really recognize where we're at. So with my remaining time, I ask that we take a moment to reflect on all three of these individuals and what we could do to prevent things like this going forward. Thank you. Your choices impact the future.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else I would like to address the council at this time?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ours?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
We stand adjourned.